United States of America and to the Republic, the Constitution, and the Constitution of the United Nations, under God, in the middle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting's been properly closed in the normal closing places. And I need a motion to approve the.
A motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? And all in favor say aye.
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 All right. Motion's carried. We're on to the approval of the minutes. We've got four meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, April 27th at 5:30 PM. Closed open session, Monday, April 27th at 6:00 PM, open session. Tuesday, May 12th at 5:45 PM, closed open session, and Thursday, May 14th at 5:45 PM, closed open session.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Having here heard none, all in favor then say aye.
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 All at the same time. Motion's carried. We're on to the approval of the financial report and bill listing. Well, I'll make a motion that be. For the bill listing.
Sorry, I was working. I'm still pulling it up. All right, I can read. I can read through.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, after listing payroll direct deposit number nine zero 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 five one seven nine four through nine zero 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 five one eight nine four. For a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty cents. Wire transfer is number two zero one nine zero zero two seven zero through two zero one nine zero zero two eight six. The amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents for total payroll of three hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. Accounts payable, check number five four two one nine through five four two three two, and the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars and fifty-nine cents. AP wire transfer two zero one nine zero zero two seven three through two zero one nine zero zero two seven four, and the amount of thirty dollars and fifty-two cents. Credit card transaction zero four two zero two zero through zero four two zero two zero, the amount of twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. ATH direct deposit number one nine two zero 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 one seven three through one nine two zero 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 one seven seven, the amount of four hundred dollars. For a total accounts payable of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty cents. Total dispersed funds of four hundred thousand, forty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there any questions? We're sharing. And all in favor say aye.
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 All at the same time. Motion's carried. We are on to delegations to be heard. If you've got any questions.
I have not got any questions. There's about another minute or so, so if something does pop in, I can help bring it back.
Yep, okay, there's another fifteen seconds. We're gonna move on from there. To. District administrator report, donations we have done. And we're on to personnel actions.
Yep, um, would like to, uh, present, uh, a few letters of resignation this evening. Would like to, uh, thank, uh, Katie Buzin, uh, for her three years of service. She is going to be resigned at the end of this school year. As well as Lauren, Lauren Seager, uh, who has spent two years with the district. And then, uh, a big, big thank you. That's bigger than the other two, but, uh, for Julie Kreiser, who has submitted her retirement letter, uh, to the district. And after thirty-three years of serving, uh, children and the entire Merton community throughout her entire teaching career, um, has decided to retire and to move on to the next phase of her career, so in her life. So we wish her the best of luck and thank her for her thirty-three years, all of the school district in Merton. And again, we also wish, uh, Katie as well as Lauren the best of luck too as well. Um, and additionally, Katie Gobick has submitted her resignation of her twenty twenty twenty-one teacher contract as she will be moving forward as a instructional specialist and literacy interventionist. So again, for, uh, since the board did not honor you, the contract, she is resigning, and then later, we will be a permitted letter of appointment for her in the meeting. And, uh, finally, uh, we did get a late resignation, uh, from Stephanie Janquardt, who is stepping down as our full-time, uh, district administrator, administrative assistant as a board secretary. Uh, we wish Stephanie the best of luck in her next phase as well. She just isn't, uh, not really worth full-time anymore, so we wish her the best of luck moving forward. So, um, just looking for, uh, a motion from the board to approve the letters of resignation from Katie Gobick, Kaylee Buzin, Julie Kreiser, Stephanie Janquardt, and Lauren Seager as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the letters of resignation from Katie Gobick. Kaylee Buzin, Julie Kreiser, Lauren Seager, and Stephanie Janquardt as presented.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? And, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time. Motion's carried. We're on to information from, uh, Dr. Russ.
Um, would like to, uh, update everybody on virtual learning. Uh, we do continue moving forward. Our last day of school officially will be June four. Um, right now, I do believe we're in round four of virtual learning, and that will run through, uh, this Friday. And then, uh, our final round starts between, uh, Tuesday after Memorial Day through June four. So, um, we are gonna continue to, uh, basically kind of wrap some things up, uh, continue to move through. Um, our curriculum is pretty much done, and now we're heading into review mode and, uh, just doing some celebrations at the end of the year as well. So we also do have a scheduled pickup and drop-off of district materials coming up next Friday, uh, where, uh, we do have our staff coming back, uh, assisting us in, uh, handing out some celebration, uh, items sponsored from our PTO. A big thank you to them. But, uh, also any last-minute things we want to share with our kids and, uh, your wake-up hours like that too as well. So, um, we are wrapping up, and then Katie did, uh, Katie Walnuts did mention, uh, you know, what's the plan to kind of assess what we've been doing? Um, we will be reaching out to our staff as well as our families to kind of gauge about what their feelings were. But ultimately, now that we've got some time to really refine virtual learning, um, we will be prepared for whatever platform happens in, uh, September. But ultimately, I think what this is showing is, is we need to be ready for this to happen at the September one, October one, November one, December one, throughout the year, just in case this occurs again. So we'll be doing a full-fledged assessment of the, uh, of virtual learning and, uh, putting the plan together on what we feel is the best interest of, uh, our students moving forward and our families too as well. So, uh, we're continuing all the way for, uh, per state, uh, recommendations as well. Um, in summer school, we did get some guidance from summer school late last week, early last week regarding how we can count minutes. So at this point, we are only virtual for the month of June, uh, per the, uh, state order that schools were being closed. And, uh, at this point, we are close to about twenty-seven or thirty, uh, courses that we have created from our, our staff as well as swallow staff and our summer school staff. And, uh, we are finalizing that later this week and getting that out to our families for registration, uh, early next week, if not late this week. Depending if we can put it all together after we get all the course descriptions. Right now, we are looking at in July, running both virtual as well as face-to-face if we can, if the state allows us to, in small groups, probably no more than ten. In July and August, as soon as we can start to run face-to-face, we will really be focusing it onto core academic areas and, uh, enriching and giving some interventions with our kiddos who, uh, whose families want that. But ultimately, we'll be reaching out to those who need it and seeing if we can get them onto campus if we can. If we can't do that on campus, we will be looking to do some virtual live teaching in the area of literacy mathematics to continue moving kids forward and trying to, to get them, uh, getting that booster and that skill builder, like we always run in the summer too. So, um, we should be hearing hopefully more from the state in the next week or so, and that'll help us plan both July and August. And then ultimately into our preparations for a September launch and, uh, whatever that may look like. So, um, so that's kind of that, that summer school update, so we'll continue to focus and communicate with our staff as well as our families on how to register for that too as well. So, um, in regards to the other state updates, again, we still are planning for all sorts of contingencies for whatever next school year looks like. Uh, and, uh, we'll continue to take a look at and work with the different companies that are needed, whether it be transportation, and, uh, some of those other support services, after-school programming, working with those guys to making sure that, that we can hopefully meet the needs. Um, after-school does have a childcare license, so, um, if that is how they are equipped to continue to operate with us, it is underneath that childcare license, so we are, we do have that covered. So, um, other than that, that's pretty much kind of the updates that I have for everybody.
Any questions? We're on to what you shared. And then we're gonna move on to committee reports. We have the student achievement committee.
Sure, uh, may thank you for our student achievement committee for coming together on Thursday, May seventh. Um, we talked about a couple of things. One was the, uh, student SEL program that we would like to move forward later for the board for a first draft. And that would be the second step curriculum, so the, uh, team is recommending that the board consider approving a second step as a student-based social emotional learning curriculum for the start of the twenty twenty-one school year. So, again, we'll be looking at that in the first draft form, uh, a little later in the meeting. The other piece that we talked about was the adult SEL side, and, uh, we, we did decide to kind of pause a little bit at the start of the school year to, to see where we're at, uh, from a, from a pandemic standpoint, but ultimately, uh, continue to slowly roll into work onward as, uh, as our kind of a guiding, uh, best practice in, uh, teacher's social emotion or educator's social emotional learning, um, as well. Um, we did purchase the book for all of our staff members, so they can begin reading that at their pleasure over the summer, but nothing formal will start until later this year. Pretty much, it's student achievement.
Okay, then we're on to, uh, policy. Sure, any other work or many questions?
From a policy standpoint, uh, you can see in the handbook or in the, uh, the packet, that the policy committee didn't meet together late, uh, for last week, on May thirteenth, to talk about the employee handbook proposed changes. Um, I did inform the policy committee and as well as the board that, uh, we did have Bob Butler, District Legal Counsel, conduct a full audit of the employee handbook. And, uh, Stacey Sherry and I spent about a half hour reviewing those. Um, and it would be our recommendation that we do get the policy committee back together to review those changes. Um, the, the main changes that Bob has recommended is basically just kind of inserting some things, updating language, nothing major. But, uh, we would like to, uh, give the policy committee an opportunity to review those, so I will be kicking those out, uh, a little later this week to the policy committee as well as the board for us to take a first review of those changes, um, for, for the employee handbook. It's just a big cleanup, but, uh, so we'll have to kind of approve the handbook in two phases, uh, assuming we want a second read, which is what I would strongly recommend because that's what we've done in past practice. So, um, but what we did talk about was is that you can see in the, uh, in the board packet, uh, we did highlight about six things that we would like to kind of take a look at. One is, is the probationary period. Uh, the probationary period was kind of scattered all over depending on some old basically DPI licensure classifications, and, uh, we are just highlighting that we would like to, uh, change, uh, and clean up the language to be three years of initial probationary period for any new teacher who joins the district, um, at that time. The second one was taking a look at the length of a plan of assistance. Uh, currently, the plan of assistance includes three semesters. And, uh, per legal counsel as well as, uh, our administrative recommendations was to move that to one, uh, which would be approximately eighteen-week period that, uh, we feel that given the support needed and given to a teacher on a plan of improvement, eighteen weeks would be expected that, uh, they could, uh, meet the gains and meet the expectation of the district. Uh, third point was taking a look at substitute compensation, and, uh, we did do an analysis of other local, uh, school districts and actually the entire CSU one area. And, uh, found that, you know, our daily subrates are, are competitive, especially the, the first zero to twenty. But, uh, we did recommend that we do up, uh, from an after twenty-one days working in the district, uh, to go to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per day. And while at the same time, we're increasing our long-term substitute compensation to a hundred and fifty dollars per day. Um, the reason for the hundred and fifty dollars per day is that we expect our long-term substitutes for our maternity leaves, paternity, or any other long-term illness for a teacher, for them to take over that teacher plan, and there is some extravigils that go along with that. It's not just an easy job, so, um, we did increase that to a hundred and fifty dollars per day. Um, the other opportunity that, uh, we are recommending is, is that obviously, like all of us, we are in the, uh, the business of retaining talent and, uh, retaining and attracting substitute teachers across the area continues to struggle. So we are recommending that to place in our handbook that a retention bonus of a hundred dollars for every ten, uh, full days' work, uh, would be added to their pay. Uh, again, it would be a hundred-dollar bonus for ten dollars for every ten days that they have completed here in the district. Uh, we feel that that will continue to attract those who want it for us to kind of build that substitute pool, but ultimately, hopefully, we're and retain our substitutes for the Merton community school district. Um, finally, the, uh, the last three are pretty easy. We're just kind of, uh, cleaning up some things. The insurance eligibility for part-time staff, for people who are hired before July first. Uh, we no longer have anyone who's, who fits these criterias throughout our handbook, as well as these, uh, that language did not jive with what our insurance policies were as well. Um, the same thing with, uh, confidential staff eligibility. Again, we're just cleaning up some insurance language there, and, uh, then we're just updating some dates and changes. So, again, this is just, it'll be, uh, for a first read later in the, uh, board meeting. But, uh, again, we will have a few more changes, cleanups, and some additions that are just more legal with nature, um, for the district, uh, a little bit later, and we'll share those. And we'll get the policy committee back together, um, early June as we, uh, review those. Anything else from our policy committee?
Okay, if there are no other questions, we're on to new business. We have the budget presentation by Sherry.
All right, Sherry, you are done. So. Um, just before Sherry gets going, obviously she'll get into this. Uh, obviously, we continue to be in a questionable pattern about the fiscal finances, and Sherry's gonna get into some of those scenarios. But, uh, a big thank you to Sherry for trying to help us navigate about what this all means, um, throughout the, uh, this kind of up and down about, uh, state budgets and things too. So, Sherry.
Great. Thank you, Ron. My name is Sherry, and this is manager of the Merton community school district. And as all of you are so well aware, right now, our lives are very uncertain due to the pandemic going on. And that is exactly how our school finances are working also. Um, it makes, it just makes the school budgeting difficult for this year. So what I'm going to do is walk us through some of the things that we know, um, some of the different scenarios I'll share with you. And then I'm also going to talk about some contingencies we have in place. And then this'll help us to weather anything that comes to us in the future. So. All right, so things we know. Our, um, budget timeline. Every May, we, uh, I present preliminary budgets with the board. It's approved in May. In September, we have our annual meeting and budget hearing. And then, um, it also is our third Friday in open account. In October comes the equalized property valuation, which is certified from the Department of Revenue. Then we receive the certification of state aid. And that's a very important piece. That's something that, um, will probably be adjusted through the state's budget repair bill. And then at the very end of October, the Board of Education certifies our tax levy. So we are expecting a budget repair bill to come from the state legislature between July and October of this year. And it'll, um, what I'm hearing is that they're looking at changing the revenue limit. Um, and that affects our equalization aid. So as long as that budget repair bill comes before the end of October, that's what we'll be looking at. However, if the legislature does not pass anything before October thirty-first, maybe going into November or December, all of these budget variables will be set. And therefore, it might affect our per pupil categorical aid at that time. So we're not sure exactly when it's gonna come out, but what I'm going to do is focus on the July through October, which is when we believe something will come. So first thing I wanted to show you is how the state of Wisconsin spends their money, because you know there's gonna be a, a revenue shortage from them. So this, uh, next fiscal year, the legislature had approved an increase in our state budget for schools at two hundred and forty-six point, uh, seven point million dollar increase in state equalization aid. Plus another increase of over eighty-one billion dollar increase in special ed aid. So that's what was originally proposed, but many of you have probably heard that Governor Evers is saying he's gonna have about a two billion dollar shortfall. Okay, so, um, also Assembly Speaker Boss has also called for every, uh, all the state spending to be frozen at this year's levels. So when you look at their, um, general purpose revenue that they bring in, this is how the state spends it. You can see six billion goes towards K through twelve education. You'd have another third of that, three billion at Medicaid and another two point six in other, which is tiny for technical colleges, community health services. So looking at that picture, you can see my education is probably going to bear a lot of that wrong. So then I wanted to show how is, um, how much money does Merton actually receive from the state every year? So this is our budget setting numbers from the eighteen-twenty, that's this school year, and we receive over four million dollars of state aid every year. That is actually forty-two percent of our total budgeted revenues for the eighteen-nineteenth school year. And in those three big numbers, that equalization aid or general aid, that's the biggest one. Uh, you can also see that per pupil categorical aid, which I mentioned before, could cap that after the upper timeframe, and then also the special ed category aid is the other part. That's larger. One way, sorry about that. So next I just plan to talk through why is our revenue limit important? And this, um, graph shows you that our revenue limit plus our per pupil categorical aid comprises about eighty-five percent of our school district's general fund, um, operating revenue. So that's a huge percentage that we are looking at. And part of this revenue limit is what impacts the equalization aid. So with here, our revenue limit, it controls two sources. You've probably heard this before, equalization aid and taxes. And that's, um, the maximum that a school district can raise through, through, um, for our revenue for the year. We also have declining enrollment with Merton, and you know that's a three-year rolling average. So every year, um, we've been declining, we will continue to decline. So write off the formula that is here. You see that resident membership per pupil, that's already gonna decrease. We know that for sure. I don't know how much at this point until we have our membership count next September. Then this is the, not times by a dollar a month per pupil. That's the revenue limit amount that I've been talking about. So right now, we're at ninety-seven hundred dollars per pupil. And what was expected was that we've gone up to ten thousand dollars per pupil for the next school year. So, uh, what, um, so what I did then is I put together a couple of different scenarios, just so you can see the actual amounts here that's being affected. The first one is at the ten thousand dollars per pupil, we would have received an increase of revenue. And the second one is freezing it, so that ninety-seven hundred dollars, we're gonna see a loss in revenue because we already have the decline in membership. Then some other scenarios that have been talked about through organizations that I've worked with is what if they actually cut, don't freeze it, actually cut some. So taking off another two hundred, that would be like ninety-five hundred dollars per pupil, shows you how much more we could lose. And then the last scenario that has been talked about is what if there was just a straight five percent decrease? And the reason that they're talking about that is because in two thousand and eleven, twelve, that was done by the state legislature. So there is a historical precedence to balance the budget in that manner. So then I just wanted to show you what I am doing for this budget assumption. These are gonna be best guesses. This will change, guaranteed. But I am using this scenario where we're just freezing it at the ninety-seven hundred dollars and, um, no increase to the special ed per pupil aid. So, um, with this scenario, the board has also froze salaries for teachers, administrators, and support staff this year until we possibly know what our actual budget looks like and what the budget repair looks like. We do have a six point two percent increase in health insurance premiums. I am estimating a five point five percent increase in property values. I am not changing open enrollment figures at this time. And then I do know that there is talk, we will be receiving some federal stimulus money from PERS Act. And right now DPI is estimating that to be forty thousand dollars is the minimum a school district will receive. So that's what I have for this budget. So overall, and, um, if you bring up, there is another attachment in the budget or in the budget packet, but it's our twenty twenty-one preliminary budget. And it has a little bit more detail than what you're gonna see on the slide here. So this is the detail of our revenues and expenses. Overall, our revenues are, uh, projected to be nine million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars in total, which is about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars less than the last year. As far as our expenses go, I am estimating, uh, nine million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars in expenses, which is a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars less than the scarce funding expenses. So if you look at the difference between our revenues and our expenses, you'll notice, uh, basically, it's gonna be a loss of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And I'm gonna talk on the next slide on why we chose that number. So, um, fund balance. Fund balance is such an important part of our finances because this is able to protect our students' educational opportunities against financial disruptions, which is happening right now. So it's so important that we've actually been able to build up. You can see on the graph over the last couple of years, it's increased, which is very helpful to us right now in this situation. Basically, I am looking to utilize savings. I estimate a hundred and seven thousand dollars is what would be saved from this COVID-nineteen quarter to our schools. That I estimated based on transportation costs, substitute costs, um, decreases in utility expenses, those types of things. So I'm guessing about a hundred and seven thousand dollars, which is something that we will roll over into our fund balance for next year and use it to offset some of those decreases. And then, of course, I also eliminated some capital projects and added to be that difference of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. So fund balance, um, we're at, now we're at thirty-four point four percent, and, um, auditors recommend about twenty to twenty-five, so we're a little bit higher. But that's so wonderful because it can really help us if we mother some of those greater cuts. I think we'll be fine with that. Um, so basically, fund balance, it's so important because it really demonstrates you have a solid financial planning, you have sound fiscal management, and you're in a really strong financial position. So we know a few things. We know there's gonna be cuts to the state budget. We have contingency in place, such as raising salaries right now. And then we have a very strong financial position, which actually will be in our fund balance. So even though there is a lot of uncertainty in these times right now, I really am very confident that we're in a very good place to weather the storms in the future. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Sherry.
All right, thank you.
Any questions for Sherry before we move on to adopt our proposed budget? So, um, ultimately, every May, the board approves a budget for, uh, the district to begin spending July one. And obviously, like you heard today, it's very preliminary, but this is, you know, something that we just wanted to kind of present to the board and the communities to see how we're doing and just kind of showcase that. But, uh, you can see the next agenda item is to approve or adopt a preliminary budget. Again, the timeframe is, you can hear from the state, but ultimately, we have an annual meeting, which will hopefully have more information than the Friday counts, and then the October levy sets, all sorts of things coming in too as well. But, uh, as you can see in the, uh, the packet, you've got a preliminary budget. But as you can see in the packet, you've got a preliminary budget for revenues and expenditures, as well as the revenue, a proposal, revenue worksheet, revenue limit worksheet. So the administration is looking for a motion to approve the proposed preliminary twenty twenty twenty-one budget as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed preliminary twenty twenty-one. Twenty 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 twenty-one budget as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Just a question for you, Sheri. If the Assembly and the Senate, Governor get in a stalemate, you said it would pass October, then we revert back to the...
Correct. It would be what is in the state law right now. So they would have to change them by the budget repair bill. And therefore, then the only other thing they could cut after that time would be that per pupil categorical aid. So they do have other places to cut, but you just don't know when exactly it's coming to.
Any other questions?
Well, so then proposing, or I guess for us going on and supporting this preliminary budget, it's kind of under the assumption that it's going to change, right? So then we'll just revisit it.
It has to, yes. It has to change. It's going to change three or four times.
Okay, so this is, I mean, this is really just a formality.
This is a formality so we can begin spending the twenty twenty-one district dollars starting July first, when we are going to incur expenses after our fiscal year begins, correct? It's a formality.
Got it.
Completely.
Got it.
Okay, then. A favor of accepting the preliminary agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motions carry. Okay, we're on to the final reading of the art curriculum.
Again, a big thank you to Don Fernandez as well as Leah Johnson for their work here in final reading. And just looking for a motion to approve the new art curriculum as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the newer art curriculum as presented. Second.
I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Who is the second there?
The Attorney General.
Jennifer. Well, Jennifer, okay. Okay, is there any questions or discussion? In all favor say aye. All the same sign. Motions carry. We're on to the first reading of the social and emotional student curriculum.
And again, a big thank you to the, the SCL team as well as the Strategic Committee. As you can see in your board packet, we have created a document that outlines basically second steps curriculum and follows their learning objectives all the way from four K through B grade. So again, this is just a draft. And in discussion right now, a final reading will happen in June. So if there's any questions between now and then, please feel free to let me know. Does anybody have any questions at this time?
Did we end up needing to do like downselecting stuff? Or it looked like right now the, the document was, I haven't looked through all of it, but a bunch of it was just there, what the scope and sequence was that they recommended? And I don't remember which program, but some of them they had way more modules than we would actually end up using. Have we gone through that number?
We have not yet. That'll be part of our next year's pilot program. For, not pilot, but basically our first year implementation, where we'll take a look at it with the team specifically. The second step is designed pretty much to be able to be accomplished within a year. The way this one worked out feels, so I think it's, it's pretty self-paced and we'll have to create a pacing chart for that. But those are all things that are going to begin to happen actually the week after Memorial Day, when we get together to start working on this as our great double teams. Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, then we're going to move on to the employee handbook revisions.
I already outlined the, from the policy committee standpoint, so we kind of highlighted that. Is there any questions from the full board regarding this discussion? Again, we'll be coming back to the full board for a final approval regarding these changes coming up here in June.
Not hearing anything, we're going to move on to the twenty twenty-one letters of appointment.
In the board packet, this is the time of year that we send out basically letters of appointment, initial letters for next year's staff. You can see the attached spreadsheet and you will notice that the salaries and the hourly wages have been frozen pending an update to the budget. But the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve the twenty twenty twenty-one letters of appointment as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty twenty-one letters of appointment as presented.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Stephanie, do you need to take it off?
She is. We updated it in the board packet. Yep. God, yours was printed before, but the board packet has been updated, if that's correct. Yep.
My question? Okay, then if there's no other discussion, all favor that say aye.
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 All the same sign. Motions carry. Okay, we've got a decision, a possible decision for architecture firm.
Yep. So a big thank you to, we did have some closed session conversations with four architect firms. And we spent last Tuesday and Thursday into the evening, both discussion as well as interviewing four firms. And what we have is, is Epstein Ulan Architects has come out on top, EUA, as a vendor that the district would like to begin to negotiate with and contract with, moving forward with an architect, possible remodel and architect design of the nineteen seventy-five or actually the entire intermediate school because we have to take a look at it in its entirety to really determine what the best use of its, of its square footage is. So the team is recommending that we, we begin to move forward with EUA as the architectural choice throughout our process. The next steps, if the board wishes, would be to have me to contact EUA and begin working with their representatives to create a contract that then would be looked over by our legal team and come to an agreement. And then you can hold a special party either late this week or early next week to approve that contract so we can begin the process of the architecture designs and phase one. Ultimately, the goal is to create three to five different plans with different costings to determine what is in the best interest for our students, as well as moving forward in the best interest of inspired curiosity, student achievement, and personal growth. So there is a tentative timeline that we would have to stick to if the board wanted to do some construction beginning the spring of twenty-one. So that's why this process would have to be going fairly quickly if the board wanted to move it forward, knowing that in talking to EUA, they would love to have things ready to go to bid by December, which means we need to start mobilizing stakeholders to become a part of the process and begin gathering ideas and then creating designs. So, so I guess anything else from the board level or anyone else who was in that closed session want to chime in?
I guess one of the questions that I had, Ron, was we had talked a little bit about the sculptor project and you mentioned it just now that where are we with, you know, the budget in terms of we had on that RFP, an initial estimate of what the project might be? And how does that, you know, correlate with, you know, our, you know, fund balance, our savings that we have and, you know, the facility funds and things like that, and all that?
Sure, good question, Phil. Well, first of all, we did ask all the architects to put a fee proposal together. And if with UEA or EUA, I'm sorry, their phase one to draw up the plans, to get cost estimation, et cetera, to get us to the point ready to go out to bid is approximately twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. If we move forward with phase two, which is the construction phase, a six point five percent would be added to the total bill. And that would be your architecture fee moving forward into phase two in the construction side of things. So Phil, basically what we are kind of looking at is, is I kind of tossed about a match number, probably right around two million dollars. Where did that number come from? Well, Sheri just presented that at this point, we have approximately a thirty-four percent fund balance, which is just under, just probably right around three million dollars, right around a three million dollar fund balance. In addition to that, we have an additional one point five million dollars approximately in the facility funds in both funds forty-one and forty-six. What we do anticipate, again, this is where hopefully we'll know some more information as we continue to make decisions. And again, we wouldn't have to decide to go into construction, you know, if we wanted to go in April of twenty-one or we wanted to postpone a year, depending on what's going on at the state level, we certainly could. But two million dollars, if we took some out of fund down, two million out of fund downs and a million out of fund forty-one or one forty-six, that still leaves us a fund balance of close to that twenty twenty-five percent. That allows us to hopefully not short-term borrow, still be a good, be in good fiscal standing, but also not to ctee the district resources for an integrated school model. So if in fact we do need to weather another fiscal storm, we would have the capabilities of doing that. So two million is kind of what we're, what I'm kind of shooting for approximately. But again, that's what the architect firm and those cost estimators are going to be so important for them to put numbers to our designs, numbers to our ideas, to see what the district can afford and what makes sense to be able to do that. So I still feel that if we were to bring down our fund balance to that twenty twenty-five percent, we still would be in great fiscal standing, as well as utilize some of those one forty-one and one forty-six dollars that we've been scoring aside for projects like this.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to double check to make sure that it wasn't, you know, a hard limit or, you know, kind of where we were. And obviously, we don't want to, you know, run our savings to zero. That's not necessarily a good idea. But, you know, when we go through this whole discovery process with the firm of, you know, kind of the master planning thing that, you know, optimizing the building use, you know, if our best option is two point one million dollars, you know, we could probably make that work, right? So I just wanted you to feel for that.
Correct. Yeah, I do not have a hard cap. Again, or I or the board has not set a hard cap. Throughout the RFP process, we have stated approximately a two million dollar budget. So on a two million dollar budget, you know, obviously the architects would take a fee of that. You've got your finisher and fixtures and equipment that would have to go in. So you're probably looking at right around, oh, one point seven five million dollars, three million, possibly, one point seven, in a two million dollar scenario. But Phil, if it's two point one, that'll be a discussion that the board will have to look at, taking a look at the entire picture. And the good thing is, is after we get these plans signed, hopefully the state will have a better idea about what that budget looks like. And, but again, it's, would be something, again, will be very improved and ensure that we make good recommendations to maintain our good fiscal standing.
Okay, thank you.
What is the advice of the board? Do you want to take action or do you want to just continue the discussion?
I wouldn't, I don't have to make a motion. I'm comfortable with that. The only piece to that is, is I do not have a contract to present to the board with the terms. So I would be giving you the direct, you would be giving me the direction. If that's, if, if legal and everything says good, then you give me the direction. If I feel it's right, and obviously I'll continue to communicate with the board and that way we wouldn't be too, get back together.
Because ultimately, the budget is going to be a function of the options we choose, right?
Correct. Yes.
So, you know, the recommendation right now is not ultimately spread this number of dollars. It's move forward with this group. You know, if, if legal hands out all that.
If you would be, the board right now would be committing twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars is what the contract is. That, that is what we are committing to right now. There is no commitment past that. But by us signing the contract, and again, through the, through the RFP process and through our interview process, they have proposed a approximately a twenty-two thousand dollar fee plus twenty-five hundred dollars for, for cost estimation. Yeah, so that's what we would be committing to right now. That's it. Not the six point five percent. The six point five percent would be if we move forward with them and move forward with a construction project.
Sure.
So Phil, I think I heard that you were really, you wanted to make a motion?
Sure, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve using EUA as the architecture firm for the area of school remodel projects.
I'll second. Second. Sorry.
You have a motion and a second. She said, work for you, works for me. Yep, works for me. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motions carry. There is no other new business. We're on a future reading in Jedi.
So we set the June meeting, June twenty-ninth for, for June. Does that still work for everybody?
Yes.
Yep, okay. And then did we want to set a July meeting?
Sure.
Sure. How does July twentieth work? Monday, July twentieth? That'd work for me. Another time.
Works for me. I don't know. I might not be in the state. This is our annual schedule to be family at the end of July, so.
Twenty?
Was it twenty-seven? Where's Jennifer for you?
We'll leave on the change and comeback, probably the thirtieth and the thirty-first.
We will excuse you.
Yeah. But we go early, we go middle, July thirteenth too works. Does July thirteenth work for people?
Nervous about July thirteenth. When are we going to know? Well, I've got, I had probably two weeks apart.
It's not good. Correct. Yeah, we're not going to know anything until July thirteenth or July twentieth. I wouldn't bet we're going to know anything July twenty-seventh. July twenty-seventh, I'm scared we'll be out of town. Yeah. People can make the twentieth.
I think we have to stay with the twentieth just because of...
Just a little bit more space.
A little bit more space.
That's fine. Because it sounds like Jennifer is, you know, she is going to be traveling, she's going to be missing that time too. So, so Lindsay, does that work for you on the twentieth?
It does.
Okay, July twentieth.
I'm in trouble.
All right. Any agenda item that board members would like to have on either of the papers?
Maybe some, not maybe, but an, an update around feedback from summer school, like, or not summer school, excuse me, the virtual school and what some potential virtual plans are going forward.
Sure. Then we can give a more detailed update at that time. Perfect.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think this wouldn't be an open session thing, but when we were talking about teacher contract salaries in closed session, we were talking about potentially doing other adjustments on the scheme and the mechanism of how we do all of that. I just wanted to make sure that we don't forget about that and that we are, you know, appropriating how we continue that work. I don't know if that's something that needs to, we've worked on over the next couple of months here through summer or if we can pick that up and follow again.
Completely up to the board when you want to start that conversation.
I, Ron and I talked about it this morning. So it is time, and I wouldn't have a problem if we set aside forty-five minutes. So it is time, and I wouldn't have a problem if we set aside forty-five minutes.
Do we want to go, just to kind of sketch out a tentative plan and things, when going to close session, we certainly can. Uh, for, for negotiating contracts and stuff like that. Um, we certainly can do that. Do we want to do that at five o'clock on June twenty-ninth? Seems like we have the full board in June, at least we can kind of set a tentative time schedule uh, for our workload throughout the next school year.
I think that's a good idea. Yes, I agree.
Okay, sure.
Alright, so we'll set a closed session at five o'clock um, on June twenty-ninth?
Okay.
Anything else? If not.
Well, the only other thing that we'll end up doing is, you know, architecture stuff over the next couple of months, because that will be, well, the schedule of that stuff.
Correct, and that'll all be in open session. Uh, those are all work, you know, workshops and uh, and open sessions for, for everybody. But yeah, that's, we will be needing some, especially early June and July, the architects, I know, want to get going and get through people together, so. Um, I'll work with the architect firms as well as the board to make sure that we set time aside that, that work pregnant.
Okay.
And fourteen. I have fourteen, the Washington, oh, there we go.
Awesome. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor then say aye.
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 All the same sign. Meeting's adjourned.